All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'd like to open this regular meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectmen for Tuesday. What is today? Seventh of June. Wait, time flies. Seventh of June, 2022. Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, when nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, or all. First order of business is public comments, but I did look back. Do we have anybody online? So I'm going to move on to correspondence. Is there anything that came in? All right. In that case, consideration of the minutes, there are several to cover. First one is the regular meeting of May 17th, 2022. Copy of those, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
A second. Any discussion? Corrections here and then those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Next would be the public here, minutes of the public hearing of May 26. Make a motion to approve this. All right. Any, any comments on those? Hearing them, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. That carries. And finally, minutes of the special meeting that immediately followed that public hearing also on May 26, entertain a motion to approve those. Okay. And any discussion on that? Hearing none of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. I'm going to make a motion to add one item to the agenda that got left off. We're going to put it on the agenda as four A, like a motion that we add recommendations from the Public Site and Building Commission Committee to, on the police firing range on the equipment. So I'll make that motion. Second. Okay. Any discussion? And hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And what should carry? So we are at four A, Geraldine and Nancy, welcome. So you have submitted the material, but if you want to cover any, any comments, any, any, any of the discussion that you had, any concerns that you had about the the recommendation.
It's at the end of your.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll just start by saying, I appreciate our, you know, being able to bring this seat tonight. Public Site and Building Commission did not vote to bring this forward. We were waiting to get all of everything together. However, I know you want to take a look at it. So we're in discussion during our last meeting, we're pretty much, well, not even pretty much, we were definitely in favor of the proposal and Gerald put together the report summarizing the whole process from the RFP on, and we were in favor of it. Like I said, we were going to vote on everything together. So that there weren't any, wasn't any opposition to the direction that the report goes in, and Gerald will kind of give you some details on that.
Yeah, the process is pretty much laid out in the report. The recap of the, we received three responses to the RFP. One was eliminated immediately. It wasn't a comprehensive set of services. The other two proposals were reviewed by myself, by representatives of the police department. They were, they were charged with checking references and evaluating sort of the technical content of the proposals. And kind of all that together brought us to the recommendation to propose that the award be made to Action Target, even though they were not the lowest cost to, they were more comprehensive proposal and have been in business and monitor and had references that could be checked, no litigation history, no claims made against their installations. Just a higher level of confidence and a higher level of service. The police department representatives are able to identify. They also have an ongoing maintenance, recycling, and material and materials replacement program that the second bidder did not have, which is which the police department feels is an integral part of the proposal and the award. And so if you have any questions about our analysis or evaluation of the two proposals, I try to answer them. We also attached a letter directly from Lieutenant Libertini from the police department. He was the one that was the most involved on evaluating, just on researching the equipment in general and working with us to make sure that we were providing the right package. The second part of what we've submitted is preliminary budget that I've developed. The piece of, piece of that budget that is, that is most, that is preliminary, I guess is the point, is the construction cost, the actual construction cost outside of the of the equipment itself. We need, there needs to be, you know, a hole blasted through one of the walls so they can bring the equipment in. That hole needs to be, that central, that wall needs to be rebuilt. There's, there's some interior finish work that needs to be done. Lighting is not provided as part of the original package. So there's some work on power sources, some low voltage work, like I said, lighting, a little bit of ceiling work. So there's a, there's a small amount of actual construction that needs to be contracted for outside of the equipment installation. And that's an estimate at this point. The next step in our process will be to take the, the drawings from the, yep, and I should say the architects have been working concurrent with the RFP for the equipment installation. So they've gotten their documents to a point where this week we can hand them over for cost, for real cost estimating. That's just my estimate of what the what pieces of project are going to cost. So our next step will be to firm up the cost estimate. I'm clearly certain it's going to be over the $50,000 threshold. But I believe that the entire, that it will be under the amount that, that it would be an amount that would bring the entire project under the million dollar threshold. So that's kind of where we're at today. And the, and the process going forward would be then to firm up the costs and get an actual construction contract. My recommendation to the Public Site and Building Commission is going to be to request from you a bid waiver on that piece. This will be over the 50, but will be, you know, our recommendation is going to be to go back to Downs Construction, who did the original building. I think they'll get the best work. They're most familiar with the building. You'll probably get the lowest price from them because they're not going to have to remobilize and re-familiarize themselves with the building. But that's sort of the next step will be to firm up the price, firm up the contract for construction. Issue a purchase order for the equipment. The equipment itself has a five month lead time. So one reason to bring this to you today and not wait until all the pieces are absolutely tied up and final is to get, sort of get ahead of that timeline and use that five monthly time while they're fabricating the equipment to, to get the construction decently.
Right. So what do you think? So this, thank you for putting this together. This is extremely helpful, this, this overall project budget. So do you think that, but this is a, we, we couldn't, we couldn't actually go to a town meeting with this number yet because of the, the piece that you're waiting for?
Recommend. I would like to have the construction, the documents are at a design development, into construction documents phase. They're not finalized, but they're at a point where a cost estimator could take a look at them and give us a real cost.
Okay.
And that, that piece, I think, should happen before going any, before going to a town meeting.
Okay.
Right. Because usually, I mean, with many other projects, we've gotten to the point where we have either schematics or design development far enough along where a professional cost estimator puts the costs together, and that's what we go to referendum on often.
Okay.
And that's what we did with school projects. We didn't have bids. The bidding process happens after the referendum amount was approved. So I mean, this is a lower amount, so it might be a little bit easier to put together as figures.
Okay.
But as Gerald said, and I see that Lieutenant Libertini is here with us now.
Yeah.
If you have any specific questions for him on the process that he went through as far as vetting the two bidders, you know, he came to our Public Site and Building Commission meeting, gave us great report on all the things that he did, even tracking down a rank of this, the other company that, that did do a bid. Was, there was only one range within a close enough distance for him to travel to. It was over in the interstate. And it wasn't even a complete range fit out. It was some upgrades to a range.
I'm going to, Lieutenant Libertini, thanks for joining us. I'm going to come to you in just a minute, but I do have a couple more questions. One is, do you, do you think you'll have that cost estimate piece before the next meeting, which I think is the
21st?
21st?
Yes, that, I'm hopeful, I'm hoping that we can get that process before the next, that tomorrow's meeting.
But the next Public Site meeting is the day after their meeting.
Yes. So you won't have a chance to act on it. Maybe that's not necessary. Yes, we would, I would have it for the 21st.
Well, I, so my
Yeah.
Was that? Yeah. So, well, my question is, should we, you know, we're, we're right on the threshold, you know? And what I'm wondering is, is should we just authorize going out to bid? And then basing our, our decision on what those actual bids are, you know, if the
Going out to bid on construction, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's one thing that when we looked at needing to have an architect complete plans for the part that actually, you know, that the target people weren't, we had already looked at what Action Target had supplied years before, and we had that to work with, but we didn't have the actual construction complete, where the power was going, et cetera, to the targets, et cetera, on all the other equipment there. So in considering putting a bid out for an architect, we have to consider things like, if, if we did do that, puts the timeframe out further. It also put us in a position of having to do things like having to walk through, et cetera, and knowing that A was a small, pretty small project. B, any other architect would have had to, as Gerald put it, remobilize. They would have had to come out, do a bunch of measuring.
Oh, well, actually, actually, let me, let me inter, I was just talking about the construction.
I'm using that as an example.
Yeah.
Because we chose to go with Ask Jakunski Humes for a proposal. We didn't go out to bid for an architect. We brought that proposal to you and you approved it. Reason we did it was not, well, won't save time and money.
Yeah.
We knew if we put it out to bid for an architect, the other architect most likely would have been a higher bid because they would have had to spend more time doing measurements, going over the drawings. Jakunski Humes already had that information in place. So it seemed to us to be prudent to go right ahead, get a proposal from them, and that's the proposal we brought to you. What Gerald is saying is that we do the same sort of thing with construction costs. Doing a bid waiver, getting a bid from Downs Construction and working with that. Which is different than putting an RFP out.
Okay.
Several bids.
Okay. So you have to, before we can even do that, we need this other piece. Okay, I got it.
Finish the plan.
Okay. So I, even if, if we have to schedule a special meeting for your group, I, I would very much like to have that by the 21st if we can, so we can move this along and schedule town meeting and/or referendum if that's necessary. So it's I mean, of course, neither one of you are magicians. So I, you know, just to the degree that you can, you know, if you can get that data.
I, probably not. I'm hopeful we get those drawings, Jakunski Humes, this week. Hopefully it's tomorrow. They said this week. We need to give Downs, you know, a week to 10 days to be into it, ask some questions, and then come up with their estimates. So it'll be, it would be cutting it close to get it for the 21st. I don't know how we get it to ahead of that.
Yeah. If you, if we need to have a meeting first before that, it would be hard to have all that together in time for us to have a special meeting.
But it could come directly to George's office.
It could. Yeah. If you're not looking for us to do input on it or approve it.
Yeah, it could go, yeah, correct.
So you, you're looking for Downs to give you a price?
Yes. Yeah. So again, this would not be their final hard bid because the drawings will not be complete. But having them involved at this point in the project and looking at the, the drawings to the extent that they're, you know, that we're done with the design development, we're into figuring out the details of the construction documents. That, that price will be accurate and another, to proceed with the rest of the project. And then we also have a number that they, that the architects can continue to design to. Right now, we tell them, you know, your hard step, the, the design estimate was $100,000. It has to be $100,000 now. How, you know, how
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I, so I'm confident that we can get a real number from Downs. I'm confident that they're the right contractor to do this. They are already familiar with the building.
Yeah, they planned for it too.
As you said, save that timeline. I mean, one reason we're here in June and not in February or March is because we went, going to bid on the, on the equipment package. And you know, by the time you issue the RFP, give them a chance to respond, evaluate the proposals, you've got six to eight weeks of time period. It would be the same if we went to bid.
Yeah.
After drawings were 5% complete.
Okay.
And other projects we've done have the same thing where we get to a certain point with, with plans. And then sometimes it's either the architect or the town that hires a professional cost estimator. It's like for the schools, we hired ONG for a short period of time. They gave us proposal for how much it would cost. That was it. They gave us the the amount that actually was what went to referendum. Same thing with the police station, the main building. Can't remember who we hired at that point to give us cost estimate based on the schematics from the architect. That was the number that went to referendum.
Okay. Brian, you had some questions?
So a few questions. One, you know, I completely support the project. You know, we talked about doing it from the beginning, you know, but a couple of concerns that I have is, you know, one, I think our contingency, you know, I've never seen a 5% contingency. Normally, it's 10, 20%. And, you know, I see that we eliminated the tack house. Now, was that the PD's decision or was that because we wanted to keep the project under a million? Because what I'm afraid is, and let me, let me just finish, is we're trying to keep this under a million because we don't want to go to referendum. And I think this passes no problem at referendum. And I'd rather just see the project done properly. We're talking about Downs Construction and, you know, they're nice guys, but I go back to all these problems we had. And now we're going to tell the taxpayers, you know, a few months ago, a year ago, we were threatening lawsuits with Downs Construction and we were not happy with them and they didn't do what they said we were going to do. And now we're going to go with them. And I think it sends kind of a mixed message. So, you know, I just think we need to be really careful. And it goes over a million dollars. So be it. Do the project right. And let's not, you know, like I said, I think it passes referendum quick. I don't think there's any issues with it. So I'm just concerned that we're just trying to focus a number under a million dollars because we just wanted to go to town meeting and move along. And I do have serious reservations about saying, you know, because I was at those meetings with Downs and they were very heated between the town and Downs. And, you know, there were lots of articles and threats of lawsuits.
That, there were no threats from lawsuits from here. We, I think we should talk about that separately once we, but I have a dumb question. What, what is a tack house?
I'm assuming Mike can answer. I think you were doing like some tactical training, Mike?
Yeah. Yeah. It, it's, the reason it's cut is it will not fit. So the height of the walls are eight feet. Once you add target retrievers, the, the runners that bring the targets, which we're still in discussion about it, but the target retrievers that bring it from the zero yard line at 25, once you put those in there, it lowers the height and the tack house walls will not fit. So we we purposely remove that.
Am I, was that something you didn't want or was it to try and just save money on the overall cost of the project?
It's, it won't fit. So we're not going to, no, it won't fit. The, the walls are eight, the walls are eight feet high. And all it is, is just, you can custom make a, like a floor plan, like a bedroom or like a first floor of a house. And it's for simunitions training and stuff like that. But again, the walls won't, they won't fit. So because of the target retrievers, if we got rid of the target retrievers, we could get the tack house. But honestly, the target retrievers, you're talking, I think the tack house was about just throwing rough numbers, 30,000. And the target retrievers, believe it or not, are 50,000. So if we got rid of the target retrievers, we'd still be 20,000 in the black, so to speak. So it's kind of a decision that the, the chief and I need to, to hammer out. But that's, that's the issue with the tack house right now.
So, so it's an either or thing. You can't, you can have one or the other, but not
Yeah, correct, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Excuse me, Matt. Did I miss something? I, I didn't hear exactly what a tack house was.
So it's a kit that, that they can buy.
Right.
And they can put it together inside the range and use it for training, like entering a building or set it up to be like a house or whatever.
It's, it's just movable. It's movable modular walls to design like a rough floor plan.
Okay, I see. So you can simulate the inside of a house or
Can they customize the panel shorter so it works for you?
I, I had, we had talked about that. You know, you're changing door heights, you're changing a lot of equipment and I think that didn't seem like an option.
And the target retrievers be installed higher?
No, no, they cannot.
And Mike, so the question I have about the tack house, is that something, obviously you wouldn't be able to fire, but is it something
No, no, no. So, so they, they do have a tack house that's ballistic and the, the price of that is absolutely through the roof. But this one is rated for simunitions, which are like, think of like, what do you call it? Paintball and steroids, pretty much. Yeah.
But is it something, it's not something obviously done that you could set up in the parking lot and, and practice with because you'd be still firing something.
Yeah, it, it, yeah. And I don't know how it would, it's, it's not meant for like outdoor use. So, you know, moving it in and out and everything like that. So you know, hey, listen, it's in my opinion, it's, it's always something that could be purchased in the future too. If, if it's, you know, it's not, it's really the functionality of the range is what we need, a live fire range. The tack house would have been a nice addition, but it, listen, if we, if it's going to not fit or it's just not going to work out, it's just not going to work out.
Is that why we raised the walls two feet?
No.
Why did we
Well, no, 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 no. We, so, so when we've, when the, when the architect first designed that range, he designed it to fit equipment from a company called Meggitt, which is another competitor to Action Target and the air handling system that they had designed. When action, when we involved Action Target, Action Target looked at it and said, if you want to go with us, you need to change this because it's not, our, our equipment will not fit in that, in the way that range is spec right now. So that's why we raised the walls two feet was to accommodate Action Target's equipment.
The option to use
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. So Action Target has come on site twice now from, from Utah and actually checked the building out and we are, we're, we're good to go. So for, for their equipment and the, the target retrievers. It's what you consider a tactical range. So if you went to a commercial range, if you went to like a gun store that had a range in it, normally you stand in one spot and the target moves to you, either towards you or away from you. In a tactical range, you move, the target stays still for the most part and you move. And that's how most police ranges are. They're tactical ranges. So the target retrievers are nice, but we're still trying to make a, a final decision on whether we really want them.
Do you have more questions?
But I think to get back to Brian's question, I think the, 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 I don't want to say the right process, but the most, the more appropriate process would be to still do a cost estimate at this point based on the design we have, to know that we're on target, to know where we're on target, whether it's, whether we're still looking for under a million or, you know, or something else. Concurrently, the police department can continue to figure out, can continue to refine what they want out of the scope of the equipment itself. And one thing that the architects are waiting on is some of that decision. Well, the decision is it actually target because that impacts some of their work. You know, what are, what are the components of the equipment that we're going to put in the, the event, you know, eventually into the space that's there? What is the mechanical equipment? How does that interface with the existing building? So if the, if, to go back to what would be a more standard process, we would have a cost estimate now to know that we're generally on track. The architects would continue to develop their documents, knowing what vendor is kind of in play. When the drawings were complete, we would send that out to bid to multiple, to multiple contractors. And it's really, it's the kind of scope where you only need a lump sum general contractor bid. We don't need to go for a construction manager and get into all the detail of the trades. We want somebody to come in, do $100,000 worth of work on that project, coordinate with the vendor of the equipment, you know, obviously coordinate with the architect. And, you know, and at the end of the day, they've got a little bit of construction work before the equipment comes in, then they wait for the equipment to be installed, and they've got to do a little bit of work to finish off the spaces, restore the site, you know, whatever damage happens when we set the mechanical equipment. So that would be the more standard approach. It would give you the transparency and comparison of the costs of other contractors. It would, it would kind of validate my feeling that Downs will probably come in at your, your best cost, but then you do still have the, sort of the, the evaluation of whether that is the firm that you want to work on the project. So
I just don't want to be penny wise powerful.
For sure.
If the project goes to 1.1 million, I mean, in that grand scheme of a thing, like I said, I'd rather see the project done correctly rather than have all these issues in the future and saying, wow, you know, if we had just done it this way. So I, like I said, and again, I don't see an issue with this project. If it does go over, I think it'll pass flying colors. So I'd just rather see us
And time wise, because we have at least five months, or what they're saying right now is it's five months for them to, for, for Action Target at least, to get the materials, fabricate, deliver and be ready to install. They've got a five month window right now. We have, we actually have the time to complete the architectural documents. Do a, a real bid process, take that, that six or eight weeks to bid and evaluate and award a contractor's contract. The only thing we would be looking for sooner than that would be an award to the firing range equipment vendor because some of the architects' work depends on knowing who the vendor is.
Well, I was going to say, it, it sounds from what you're saying that we, we, even if we're not moving ahead with the town meeting and, and the financing, we need to make a choice on the equipment. So the architect knows what to work with, correct? Okay, great. Yeah.
Is there any money left over from the original project?
That's, we've got to get that on finance.
All right. So if, if there is money left over from project, that'll reduce this project. Is that correct? So it'll be under a million?
Well,
No, you know, I don't know what it is. I don't know. Brad passed it at his fingertips. He probably doesn't. But we would have to look at all of the expenses.
It's a separate
The last time I looked at the spreadsheets, there were some expenses on there that I wasn't sure if they should be there or not. So
Is Brad even here?
What's that? Yeah. Hey Brad, you there?
Yeah, I can hear you. I don't have that because I've been waiting for Nancy to say they're done with spending on the project.
Do you know where you are now, Brad?
I don't. I haven't looked at it in a while because this has dragged on for a while, but I could work that up.
And we are, we, we actually paid our last, we paid our last Downs bill and paid our last post use bill. There shouldn't be anything else. So I have a question for Marty. About other expenses that shouldn't be
Yeah. So Marty, so Marty.
Is any money left over from the original project considered to, to go to this project?
I was just looking at the charter on that. I think that you're not going to get away, you, you probably can, if I remember right, what we'd have to do is we would have to have a, a meeting to switch it over, to have to be approved by the town meeting. Because it wasn't used for that. That, that whole system was changed from what it originally was. So when we decided to finish it the way it was finished, that was eliminated from the project. So if there's money left over, I believe the people have to vote on it again to bring it back into the project.
Okay.
I have a question. And the other, and the other issue I have too is if you look at the, the ordinance regarding the $1 million, it doesn't say, I, I mean, the only thing that they're talking about in the $1 million that I feel is correct for a referendum is, is that all of the town's monies that's being spent. So if, if we only have $800,000 we have to raise and there's $220,000 left in the kitty, I think you still may have to go to a referendum.
That's my thought. Lieutenant Libertini, can, you, you provided a very thorough recap of the, the review process, but any, any highlights you want?
Recap of the uh the review process, but any any highlights you wanted to get as to why you picked the more expensive. Uh, of the two range systems and what those factors were.
Sure, so Action Target's been in business for, I think, over thirty years, uh I think since the early seventies. This other company, um one, I've never heard of them. Two, that I think they've only been in business for the last six or seven years, uh if that. Uh, five years possibly. Um, I have not heard of their product. I have not spoken to any other. Anybody in law enforcement that I know of that has their product other than uh when I took a ride up to um. Uh, where was it? New York? Sleepy Hollow, Sleepy Hollow, New York, and um they uh. Their range was interesting. It was in the basement of the police department, which was the basement of the fire department. And um they just did target, they just had targets that all they put in were spinning targets at the end of the range. Other than that, the range, the air handling system was the one that was in place, the range itself, the backstop was what was originally there. So the only thing they did with these target retrievers and quite frankly, wasn't very impressed with their with their uh. Function or functionality or even workmanship, but um. Other than that, I I just. They seem like um. They seem like a relatively new company that um doesn't have a lot of experience, let's put it that way. And Action Target is just, I mean, you when you talk about international footprint, they do ranges all over the world and uh. Large federal ranges, law enforcement ranges, um commercial ranges, and they have a very good reputation.
Uh, so they have uh how how many police agencies uh offhand uh in Connecticut use Action Target?
I mean, offhand, I total number, I don't know, but I can I can rattle off three or four right now. Um, I think Stanford just did their range. Uh, I know Wilton is looking, I think it's Wilton that's looking to to go with them. Greenwich, I believe, has Action Target. And I believe Stratford may also have Action Target. Um, and there's another one up in the capital region, but uh. There are there are several, and there's probably more. I just, those are the ones that I can just that I know of personally.
And they have um service within the state that like they're they're responsive and they have.
Yes, so yes, so so the other company does not offer uh maintenance or or service. So what that means is for the air handling system, we'd have to contract with an HVAC vendor and they would have to come in and put the HEPA filters in however. However often we needed to to change them. Um, as far as the backstop, once we would need to clean out the backstop of all the lead. And copper remediation, uh we'd have to hire an outside company to do that. Action Target does all of that. And uh their remediation program is really easy. For the most part, when we when you end up cleaning out a backstop like that, you kind of break even. Whatever the cost is to clean it out, you usually make back in the scrap metal. Uh, you get credit for the lead, you get credit for the for the brass that you that you that you shot, so it usually is uh. It's kind of negligible where where the most money comes from as far as uh maintenance goes, the filters for the air handling system.
Um, hey Marty, I have a question for you. Um, so. In this, so we're we are, we are not going to move forward. And and send this to the Board of Finance tonight, obviously, until we have all of the cost factors. But uh I would like, if it's permissible legally, I would like us to make the uh bid award. So that the architects know what they're working with, and that would give the uh the uh building committee the final component they need to to do the estimates and. Put the specs together for the final bits. Is is that uh is that allowable that we make that award? Well, the only thing, the only problem I have with that is that you don't have a a decision by your public site and building commission. I mean, the last minutes, they put it off until they got more information. It was the general discussion. I remember I read the minutes. There's nothing there, so I don't know if you want to do that. I I I I have a feeling that they may be setting a bad precedent for future things. That uh may happen, and I I'm not so sure that's a wise thing to do. But that's my opinion. I think you can do, the Board of Selectmen can do what you want. I mean, you can go ahead and accept the bid. In fact, um I I think you're gonna look on the agenda. You've got on there for the uh matter regarding the old police station. Uh, I think it's that one. Where the purchasing agent went ahead and told, went ahead and told the 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 bidder. You know, you got the job, and yet you still have to vote on it, so I mean. I think you can do it, but I I just think it's probably not a wise idea. I'd wait for. For a public site and building committee to come back with their recommend final recommendation.
Okay. Final recommendation meaning the entire class or the meeting tomorrow night?
No, for the even for the bid, to accept the bid. You you know that I read your minutes. It didn't indicate anything like that. It just said that, you know, you presented information, you presented with a lieutenant's information. And that, you know, you were gonna wait for other information before any final decision was made. I mean, if you want to, when's your next meeting? Or you can make a motion tomorrow night recommending that the that the bid with Action Target be done. And the, you know, then the selectmen can move forward and do whatever they want at that point. I just think that there's an orderly process to things, and the more times you break that up, the bigger problem you're gonna have down the road with other projects.
Okay. And I think we have the time, so even if that's your next meeting, you made the award. Yeah, I I mean, I can have a conversation. I just really need to let the architects know what they're. Rolling with, so the direction to that is continue to design to the action target specs, which is what they started with. Um, and and by the time we have a decision on that award, then we can pull together. The information we need to actually go through the bit.
Okay, if yours, if, okay, so I I understand why you were holding off it because you wanted to get the other components.
Right.
What what I was looking for, um and I probably wasn't clear on this is. You know, a yes or a yes on one of these two systems, just so the architects know what they need to work with. Even though we to do the whole project, we have to wait for all those components.
Right.
So if you're meeting tomorrow night, we could have, if if it's necessary to have a formal vote by us, by the three of us. So you can let the architects know, we could pull together a special meeting on Thursday to do that, just so you have that final piece to work with.
I mean, couldn't we tonight give them? You know, say, if you decide that you want to go with the higher bid, we support it. I mean, we don't need, I mean, we're not really going to bid, we're just saying, well. Look, if 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 Action Target is the industry standard, and that's who all the police departments in this area are using. Then as a board of selectmen, we can direct you saying, if that's who you choose. Go for it. I mean, you know, we understand, we read the letter that was provided to us. We understand the other company doesn't have a presence in Connecticut. Northeast, so I mean, just, I don't think you need us to vote on that for for us to for us to say that we support. You know, we can support that decision, and then they can concur with us, right?
I I think we can do it by consensus, because because that's exactly what I was asking Marty.
Is that okay, Marty, or is that a problem? I can't hear you, Marty, you're on mute.
I know. I I don't think that's a problem. Okay, so great. So so by consensus, we're gonna say, go ahead and tell them, this is the way we're gonna go.
We'll sit, we'll put it in the minutes tomorrow night.
Okay.
And the question I have, though, is it's is it's is this actual an actual? Official award?
You gotta have all the numbers together.
Make sure that we're not telling Action Target to get started.
You're awarding the bid, but uh upon approval or funding.
Yes, alright, so we're still. Weeks maybe, couple of months away from actually issuing the PO to Action Target to start their five month process of.
I I I don't think it would need to be that long, I I mean.
Have to have a referendum.
Well, but if we're going to go to bid with the construction part. Yes, we need to wait until the architectural drawings are complete, so maybe that's another four weeks. And then we have to do the bid process, which may be another six weeks. Then then we would come back with the full, we've already we already have all the professional fees, we would have, we have the bid, well. We have a number for Action Target. It may change, though, because of the duration here. Um, so we'll probably. Yes. There's a primary in August, so we have to take that into consideration, so it would have to be after that, it would be before, it's up to August. So we would be later in August for action by the Board of Selectmen and then issue a purchase order, which would start that five month time period running. I mean, this is all. There was a referendum, it would be at the end of August or it's. Well, I just I just want to lay out the timeline. I don't think any of that's an issue. I mean, it it I mean, I'd be like a firing range as soon as possible, I'm sure, but. Um, but that's just, that's how the duration would run, and now we're probably into. February of next year before the actual installation.
Well, I'll tell you what, um. You, let's let's just stay in contact with with my office on on all these different components. And and I'm not so worried about whatever the timeframe is, it is. I I just don't want the price to change, you know, but it's gonna take so long, so.
Well, and then, well, I would say that I've already heard from Action Target that they obviously, their. The bid they put together was in April. It was supposed to be held for sixty days, we're beyond the sixty days. Almost, almost.
Well, before our next meeting, can you say if they could extend, just explain the process? We need to go through that. The border, the border selectmen are in favor of Action Target?
Yes.
Can you guys extend your guaranteed quote for another, whatever we need, whatever you guys say we need sixty, seventy days?
We had that kind of, we started that conversation. Their concern is that the mechanical equipment, which is. Three hundred of the four of the eight of the seven hundred thousand or something is where the biggest risk is, because all and it's true within every industry that. That that HVAC equipment, it changes day to day. So um they're, what they're telling us right now is they're holding, their equipment is fine. It's the piece of half of it that is mechanical equipment that. Has the biggest risk for increasing in price.
Is there a number you're confident it's not gonna go over? Is there a number right now that you guys looked at and said? You know, one point one million and we're a hundred percent there. I mean, because, I mean. If time is of the essence and it looks like we're gonna cross that threshold. Then, you know, we move that forward and just say, look, this is a number we're comfortable working with. We get the referendum on the books and we just move forward.
I don't know, it really is, it's really tricky on that.
That's my point, though. If it's if it's that tricky and we're just gonna say, well, we're gonna prove nine hundred ninety. Nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight to stand under the million, we're doing the police a disservice and we're doing ourselves a disservice.
You know, will the mechanical equipment cost increase twenty percent and another sixty thousand dollars onto there?
But unless they're willing to, you know.
Well, I I don't think we can get that number until you you tell the architects we've chosen action, now they know what they're designing to and then.
And I will have another conversation with Action Target. I'll informally say we're still, we're still working towards. This process and this end, the architects are proceeding with their work. We're going to go to bid with the construct with the actual construction stuff. We look like we're gonna be out. Probably until August to actually issue a purchase order. What do you think it's gonna do to your pricing?
Alright.
And in the meantime, we'll get the approval on the public site billing commission tomorrow, at your next meeting, you can take. Concur again, or you know, whatever it takes. In the meantime, we'll we'll work through that process of getting hard construction.
Okay, alright.
We have to do, obviously, we have to do a referendum, that's a little bit of a longer process, but a town meeting still has. Do you have to do a public hearing for a town meeting?
No, 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 you just go straight to a town meeting, so.
But if you're, if we have a referendum, you have to have a public hearing and then a referendum.
Yeah, we'll 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 have to work out those that timeline, but um, okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Alright, I just have one minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It it's just. This ward has waived a lot of bids, and we're being asked to waive more bids almost every meeting. And I'm not in favor of wa- wa- bid. I understand Action Target is a specialty company, so. And they're the better of the two, but for the general contractor or general work. In anything that we're doing in town should be bid, in my personal opinion.
That's good. I mean, it's really just identifying the process, so that's good. If that's that's the position of the board of selectmen, then we definitely have a a direction on how to proceed with the.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so I'll I'll make a motion that we table this to the next meeting to make sure it's on the priority. Second goes in favor.
I.
I, so this will be on the, what is the next one, Dan, the twenty first?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Um, I'm going to ask Eric Swenson is with us. Uh, oh, Lieutenant Libertini, thank you very much for joining us. Uh, yeah, Marty, did you have a comment? Yeah, I don't think you voted on the motion. You just you ticked a second and then you moved on. Oh, I think I slurred. Goes in favor? Uh, my audio dropped out, sorry. Um, Lieutenant Libertini, thank you very much for joining tonight. Appreciate it. If it's all right with my colleagues, I'm gonna skip down to number six, so because Eric has joined us, so we can talk a little bit about. Well, actually, uh consideration, number five was consideration of refunds, but we can go back to that.
We voted that. We didn't know.
No, not on the refunds. That was my motion to table the the police station thing to the next meeting.
Well, why don't we do it real quick? I mean, there's no.
Alright.
Fine, we didn't do the tax refunds.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion that we approve tax refunds as requested in amount of thirteen thou- thirteen thousand two hundred twelve dollars and eighty-three cents. Goes in favor?
I.
I, they curious, okay. Now we're at item number six. Uh, you have in your packet a uh multi-page, it gets a seven-page draft. Of a proposed ordinance. This is the illicit discharge and connection stormwater ordinance. Um, this is related to the MS four permit. You you guys know what that is, right? Municipal separate storm sewer system. Um, they're they're increasing uh requirements uh from deep and federal EPA. And along, uh so the towns in around the nation, really, it's a na- national issue. Towns around the nation are required to control, uh do a better job controlling stormwater. Shut more uh stormwater into the ground as opposed to running off into waterways. And uh as part of that, towns must adopt ordinances that have clear. Uh penalties for illegally discharging stormwater. So Eric, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you if you can. Explain a little bit about this uh this proposed ordinance, where the, this is a boilerplate that I think came from Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, right?
Yeah, and several towns around here have have basically, that have already adopted it, basically use this tax. Uh, more or less, so um. Assuming everyone's familiar with MS four, like Matt said, um, there's a whole laundry list of things that come with MS four and. One of the things, or or I guess you can't count them as three, this ordinance is one that they um created this tablet. For the towns to adopt, and there's also two um zoning regulations, which um. Um, the zoning uh board is is uh has either, I know they've talked about it already at the last meeting, I'm not sure. Where they are with adopting them, but they all basically have to do with stormwater and runoff from. Private properties and so forth, and and this one is is really just. Um, I mean, it's 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 really common sense, it's basically prohibiting illicit discharges of chemicals and so forth. Into the stormwater systems, which, you know, we didn't want anyway. Uh, but anyway, this is just establishing a legal precedent, I guess, really the only thing that. Needs to be filled in and blanks, really, and unless Marty, unless Marty's had any issues with some of the language in here is. Um, what are the fees? What are the um, what are the fees gonna do for violating this? What are the, you know, appeals periods? So there's some timeframes in here, and I'm not sure what ver- um, if you have a color copy, but those. Those numbers are highlighted. Um, at least in the copy I have. Uh, so that's it in a nutshell. I don't know, Matt, is there anything else I should dive into?
No, I I don't think so. Do you guys have questions?
Uh, I have. Okay, Richard, uh in section twelve, the water course protection, um. That that applied to uh Beaver Dam, is that it? Eric?
Beaver Dam. Uh, let's see here, um.
Any any person owning property through which a water course passes? She'll keep and maintain.
You know. That's a really good question. Um, it doesn't specifically say that.
Well, no, but you gotta maintain the water course so water flows freely. So uh I don't know, maybe Marty, do we want to put something in there that um. Due to beavers or something? Because there's been a lot of conversation about that.
Yeah, no, I know, it's a real problem in the town. Um. I I suppose we can. I I read this.
I, I suppose we can, I, I read this, well, yeah, I'm sure we can, I mean, it's got everything else in it, what difference to make?
Yeah.
I, I, I have to tell you though, that, that I think this is, um, the chances of this being enforced, the way it's written, is next to nothing. I mean, I, I'll lay you odds that in the vast majority of cases, if you really have to try to enforce something, you're gonna be in court all the time. It's not something that's gonna be easily resolved the way it's written. And I was gonna look at the couple of the sections there that are referred to in the state statutes and also, uh, the act two, because I, I just look at this as that it's nice, but at the same time, it's very, gonna be very difficult to enforce and, um, have logistical penalties. I'll give you a perfect example for the board, uh, Brian may not be that familiar with it, but you're, um, you're, um, we spent a year discussing, um, and trying to put together a big invoice, a big invoice, a big ordinance regarding, um, you know, neighbors' properties, you know, blight ordinance. And I have to tell you, it, it let us go out a lot on it. Some of them do the people follow up, but I mean, to my knowledge, we've never had one hearing on any of those yet, not one. So I just think it's, it's kinda hard to do with what we have to work with. I mean, it's nice to say you're gonna be fined, who's gonna do it? What happens if you don't pay the fine, they've got in there that you might be able to do an assessment against the property? I think if you're gonna do that, you've gotta be more specific in how you're gonna do it. And it, and it says in there that you have to notify the polluter in writing, it doesn't say how. I think you need to do that too. So, I mean, the ordinance is okay, I guess, across the board, but I just think it's gonna be another one of these ordinances that we get, and the way it's written, and it's gonna be forgotten, if you wanna know the truth.
Marty, would it be possible to reword this in a way that?
Well, I, I think.
Keep in mind, this is just, this is just sort of a template that we got from deep, so.
No, 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 I, I understand that, I think the thing that I'm concerned with is the enforcement provisions. That, that's all, and that's why I wanna look at it to see if we can, we can bolster it and make it easier on ourselves. I mean, you don't wanna pay me or another lawyer going to court every time somebody throws a, a can of paint down a, down a drain, you know? I mean, there's gotta be some other way we can do it, and I know they have listed other ways, but they don't really have any teeth in there, you know, I mean, they have to be, I think it's gotta be more specific. And I'd be interested in knowing what towns have already passed it in the area, I'd like to take a look and see what they've done. They might have changed it, they may not have, I don't know, so, has Danbury done one?
I'm not sure about Danbury. Um, I can find out what, what towns have passed.
Yeah, if you can find out, let me know and I'll take a look, I mean, I, I, I know we need something and we should have something. But I just worry about enforcement, I mean, we got.
Okay, well, uh, maybe it would be nice to have one that's not seven pages long too.
Is, is this required, this is required by the state, Eric?
Yeah, so it's, it, yes, it's one of the requirements as part of MS four, which, believe it or not, comes ultimately out of the Clean Water Act from the nineteen seventies.
Yeah, and, and there's no guidance from the state or federal government on, on penalties or enforcement?
No, they, well, they, what you see highlighted in yellow, they've kinda left some blanks that they're letting the towns fill.
Yeah.
Well, um, should we, uh, table this, uh, for further review by the town attorney?
Yes, definitely.
All right, I'm sorry to interrupt your workload, Marty, but.
No, but there's another thing in here too that's, that kinda bothers me, and that is, um, I'm looking for the section number, section ten B. It talks about access to facilities. Basically, this says, we can bust into anybody's place to check out what's going on. I, I find that hard to believe. I mean, the police can't do that, you know, what if they, you know, they ought to have probable cause. There's a whole list of things that says here that the town can do, and I just don't think, you know, if we try to do these things, we're gonna end up with a serious problem, I feel anyway. Like it says, you get access to all parts of the premises for the purposes of inspection, sampling, examination, and copying of records that must be kept under conditions of whatever, or a, uh, right to set up any permitted facility such devices as are necessary in the opinion of authorized enforcement agency to conduct monitoring. You gotta go on their property to do that. You know, I mean, I, I think we're gonna have a problem with that, or somebody's gonna have a problem with it.
Section sixteen says the same thing, that.
Yeah.
That's after, they're saying you have to have a property to monitor that they continue. I, I think that's, I mean, that's, yeah, that's.
All right, well, like, like, like I said, it just seems like it's a recipe for being in court every other day, and you don't want that.
Make a motion that we table this for a future meeting after Public Works and the Attorney has planned to.
Second.
All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thanks Eric, um, we'll have further discussion.
Yeah, let me just call him on the phone. Marty, did you get them, there was a webinar presentation, cause there's so many aspects of MS four. Um, they have had some training.
I haven't seen it, no.
Ever see the one that was, there was one that was presented by a law firm? So hopefully, maybe that will have some things that kinda speak to your angle.
Do you, do you have it?
Yeah, I can send it to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll look at it, sure.
Okay.
Okay, and if you give me the names, if you know the other towns that haven't in the area passed, I'd appreciate that too.
I'll get that to you.
Okay, all right, uh, hey Eric, don't go away yet.
Okay.
If it's, if it's all right, uh, since you say you're still here, I wanna skip to, uh, thank you, Dan, for catching that. Uh, I wanna skip all the way on the back page of your agenda to number eleven, consideration of recommendation for remediation and demolition of old police headquarters. Uh, there is a quote, um, there's a quote in here from Hygenics. And we're, we're, we're not moving forward with, with this, like, to Marty's point, I think there was a little bit of miscommunication, but what the uh, Public Works Department was tasked to do is bring in a company to examine the police department, the old police department headquarters, and catalog the hazardous material for the purpose of having that data so we could put out a bid to, uh, uh, tear down the old station. Uh, so, now we, we know what that cost is, um, so we have to decide what to do with the station. So, um, my feeling, uh, I think I'm distilling uh, probably two years' worth of discussions that the boards of selectmen have had over that time, is that uh, there is no economical use for the building, uh, it is highly contaminated, it's in a flood zone. It could not be renovated for use as a police station. It is not consistent with any use, uh, that planning and zoning would permit. Uh, we have had a couple of commercial enterprises take a look at it and decide that it was not suitable for their purposes, but, uh, even on top of that, even if it was suitable, planning and zoning indicated that they would not approve it for those purposes. So, um, I, I don't know if my colleagues, uh, are ready to vote on this tonight, but, uh, we do have the information, we can um, make it a formal vote to, uh, demolish the old station and then, uh, consider a, uh, alternative use for that property at some point in the near future after it's done.
Just have a question about the bid.
Okay, uh, Eric, can you hear?
Brian, I can hear.
So, Eric, I, I see the, the, the bid from Hygenics is to clean and get everything remediated. Is the universal waste, is that the actual building, ten thousand, so does the ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fifty remove the building completely, or is this just what it appears to me? Is that this is just to remediate the surfaces and then we're gonna have additional cost and demolition?
That's correct, that's, yes.
That's correct, so have we gotten a quote from a contractor to demolish the building?
No, when I was.
Once we've remediated it?
Well, what, what I was gonna, this was, this was, this was one quote with one supplier to, and to, uh, to Rich's point. Uh, we do have to go out to bid on, and everything, so what I was gonna propose that we do is, uh, it, well, first of all, we have to decide and formally say, yes, we're going to demolish the old station. But in the bid process, I would put out, uh, a two-part bid, like a add, an add alternate, so a contractor could bid on one component or the other component or both components, depending on what their specialty is. Cause some, some companies only do remediation, some only do the demo, some do both. So, uh, that's what I was gonna propose that we do.
Matt, did you, did you get the, the, the demo budget number that I sent?
Uh, no, did you send that today?
Uh, I think I sent it yesterday or the day before, well, no, today's Tuesday.
I was the number, but, yeah.
So, that was another one thirty, so, so I should just clarify, the, what we got is not a bid, we got a cost estimate from a, um, environmental assessment firm, they don't do the remediation. Um, they just did an analysis of what's there, and then we asked them to give us, you know, a projected cost estimate, what it would take for a contractor, remediation contractor to clean it up. They also gave us a few names of contractors and told us that a couple of them, they gave us three, they said two of them also do demolition. We, we made contact with one of them that did demolition and they gave us some, you know, sort of, um, rule of thumb numbers, so, uh, for demolition. So the cost of the remediation is what you see there, which is the ninety-three. And then we estimate for budget purposes that the demolition would be another a hundred and thirty. Um, and that would be about a hundred for the building, and I think it was another thirty for the parking lot to be removed. So altogether, re-clean up and demolition would be two hundred and thirty thousand altogether.
That's consistent with what the old town hall was too.
All right, Eric, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
In, in their findings of the, uh, environmental assessment, they say there's no PBCs, uh, some lead dust, and that's what the major quote was from, from them, to remove the dust. Uh, and then, uh, they go on to say, uh, asbestos is assumed to be in most materials. That building was built in the seventies, I think that was, uh, after there was supposed to be no asbestos in any of the buildings. And over the years, we've had, uh, asbestos consults and throughout all the town buildings. Are they still saying there was asbestos in that building?
They, they, well, that was the thing, they didn't necessarily, um, sample for it, they just assumed based on the age and, and the phase one environmental assessment. I mean, they did a whole report on it, I can provide that to you, um.
Well, vermiculate was used past the seventies, Rich, and that had asbestos in it, vermiculate was used up until the eighties, I believe, when they found out that that was a, am I correct?
Well, is there any in there?
Well, I don't know, some of the blues were found out as best as.
Right, yeah.
There's, uh, we know, you know, what, what could be in there.
Um, is, in, in your office, is there any of the old records of, uh, building inspections of the building that you're aware of?
You mean when it was, when it was constructed?
No, no, over the, over the years, we've had consultants in all the buildings, the, uh, town hall, the firehouses and, um, and I'm sure the police station was on that list for, uh, assessment of hazardous materials and.
The, the only thing I knew about was the twenty eighteen assessment, uh, that was also done by Hygenics that came from an OSHA complaint. That's the only, um, earlier inspection I was aware of, that I'm aware of.
So, if we wanted to put this out to bid, and we just say, you know, we wanna procure bids for the remediation and demolition of the building, do we need to provide the specs to them of the toxic agents found, or is it up to their own due diligence to look at the building, we let them in the building and they come up with a price from there?
I, I, I wouldn't, I think we already, we have these, sorry to interrupt, but we have these reports from Hygenics, some of them are pretty long, you know, almost a hundred pages, so, I wouldn't, I, I don't see any problem with just providing that as, you know, an appendix to the RFP.
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's why we, we brought that company in, so that a contractor who's bidding on the project would, uh, the demo would know what's in the building. Makes sense?
My only fear is if Hygenics miss something, and I mean, we're gonna put some sort of language to protect ourselves. It's like, these are known, you know, if you want to enter the building, go ahead to prepare your bid.
Yeah.
You know, I just wanna be careful that we're not setting ourselves up for, hey, we didn't know there were PCBs inside this wall, you know, it's like, hey, well, too bad.
Oh, yeah, there, there'll be a contingency for surprises, well, it's like when they started saw in the old, uh, science tables in half at the, uh, in the Bethel River Innovation, discovered that those were made with.
I, I think it makes sense to put a motion, you know, you never know, I mean, it's just an attractive nuisance for people to get in trouble, I mean, you could have someone light the place on fire, vandalism, someone gets hurt in the building, they wanna, you know, break in, I, I mean, I think it makes, I think it makes perfect sense to take them down at this point.
All right, all right, well then I will, I will put a motion on the floor that we approve demolition of the old police station and authorize the purchasing department to, uh, draft, uh, bid packages to, for remediation and demolition of the facility. All right, so Rich seconded, uh.
Right, whatever, whatever.
All right, well, seconded, we, we've got a second and a third. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Eric.
And I, I think, I think we get the one bid, it covers everything.
Yeah. All right, um, item, we're gonna move on then to item number seven. Um, thank you, Eric, now you, now you can go home.
Do you, do you need me for the owners' rep discussion?
Uh, well, if you wanna stick around, sure, cause I'm gonna do that next, then, uh, the next item is, is another item to be tabled, cause we're still waiting for info. Uh, so let me cover that very quickly, item number seven, consideration of the eight twenty-four for planning and zoning regarding the Terre Haute Trail System Project from the New England Mountain Bike Association. Uh, we did receive a favorable report, uh, from planning and zoning. I also received favorable comments verbally from the Economic Development Commission, although I haven't received a report from them. But I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we table this item to the next meeting, because, uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission is meeting this week. And it still wants, they, they've already discussed it once, but they wanna discuss it further and they may have some questions or comments. So, before we, uh, move ahead with that, oh, oh, we wanna wait for their comments, so I'll make a motion that we table this.
The, the only thing I did find out, there is gun hunting going on over there, they do allow shotgun hunting on the Terre Haute property.
Who's, who's they?
The town has signed permits for years for people to hunt Terre Haute property.
Uh, I have never signed a, a, those, those permits come to me and the only thing I've ever signed is a bullet.
Yeah.
Uh, I spoke to the, uh, a couple of the guys from the Fish and Game Club, and they said that there's people, just, it's something that we're just. Says archery?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have.
There's a, there's a big sign up that happens the first weekend in September.
Yeah.
Um, but it's just for archery, that's all that's ever been allowed over there.
Well, even for archery, there's, there's, there's no problem with prohibiting, you know, mountain biking activity during hunting season. I mean, it's a, it's a finite period of time, so I mean, that can be managed, but I, I think, I guess we, as a separate issue, we have to get to the bottom of that.
Yeah, cause, yeah.
Yeah, cause if there's, if there's some shotgun hunting going on up there, then that's something we have to address.
Look at that deer, it's has wheels.
All right, so those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Eric. Okay, item number eight, consideration of the owner's representative services, this is bid number two zero two two dash zero one. Um, we have a, uh, we put out a bid, um, and it, just to refresh your memory, we put out a bid package for owner's representative services, uh, Geraldine, thank you very much for bidding, we appreciate that. Um, there were two companies that were considered, S T V, which, uh, is Geraldine's firm, and, um, then the other one is Colliers Engineering and Design. Um, the, there was a, a, a committee, uh, Eric, you were on, uh, the review group along with Chris Baldwin, I think, that's the bag now, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
And James, uh, James, our engineer was.
Okay, our engineer, uh, Ja- James was, was on that too. Uh, how do you pronounce the name, Demeo?
Mm-hmm, Demeo.
Right. So the, the recommendation that came back from this group was to, to retain Colliers, my, my apologies, there's a rubric, um, there's a rubric that the, uh, committee used, which is attached to the letter. Uh, and the, so this came from the review committee to the procurement committee, so the procurement committee agreed and forwarded it to us with the recommendation that we retain Colliers Engineering and Design uh, for the purposes of, uh, of this, uh, project, and this is to help with. Help with all of the capital projects, including the, including but not limited to the ARPA projects that we'll be working with over the next two years. So Eric, do you want to add any, any commentary to that?
No, it was just a very difficult decision to make. Both firms were excellent firms, very well qualified. We went back and forth a lot, and you can see that reflected in this ultimate scores that were very close. You know, we ended up going with Colliers. Based on, well, a number of factors, but I think. Their HVAC and mechanical experience, which we. Many of the projects involve some of that, so that was one factor and just a few other, you know. It's all in the scoring, but it but it was a very difficult decision. But I think they're both very well qualified firms, and we we ended up going with Colliers.
Eric, what's the length of the contract period with Collier? Is there, is there a finite period or?
I'm sorry, say that again.
How long is the service agreement gonna be in in intact with Colliers?
I don't know if you can hear me.
Because we have, we really don't, we're working through a list of project, of capital projects, and I don't think we could pinpoint a timeline yet. His project specifically.
I believe the RFP, I can't remember exactly, mentioned two or three year timeframe, if I'm not mistaken.
So they've been their fees out for three years?
Yeah.
No, the your group interviewed both firms, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. Okay, do you guys have any other questions?
Alright, well, I, yeah, I, Eric. Just that Kyle Collier had more engineering than STV? In that in-house?
They're both very qualified. I think it came down to the. The actual people they had on the ground had were more, had a little more hands-on mechanical experience, and that was one of the. One of the main factors, I think. Because, I mean, I don't know. Matt's probably seen that original list of all the capital projects that we have. A lot of them are building related, building renovation, including a lot in the municipal center. So. That that was, that was one of the main factors.
And was there any fee structure in in discussion?
Yeah.
It just like hourly fees for.
Right, exactly. And. The fees for both firms are similar.
They were, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Right, well, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation for Colliers Engineering and Design. Geraldine, once again, thank you. I appreciate all the work you put into it.
She's, she's still working for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Thank you, thank you for coming today.
I can just make a comment.
Yes, please.
You know, without you, the school projects would have been horrendous. So thank you for your help in both of those projects. Well, maybe five was on the committee.
Alright, thanks, thanks a lot. Have a good night. Alright, so that motion carries. Let's see. The next item on the agenda is. I think there's a little bit of, alright. Consideration, this is expansion of duties for the IT position, which is about as cryptic as we could make this. Okay, Eric, you can go home now if you want to, or you can stay. It's it's up to you.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Okay, so Brad, you're still on, right?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, okay, so now this, you've got a sheet here that says expansion of duties. Let me, let me explain what this really means. This. These are new things that our IT professional, Mr. Cataldo, Nick Cataldo. Has added to his, has had added to his list. Over the past year, two, two years really. As we have integrated more and more into the fire departments, as Mr. Cataldo has taken over. Fully taken over all network administration for our system, as we've added new software such as. Munichity, Open Gov, some of the other programs that are now becoming onboard for the police and fire. And not for the police, but for the fire. So the the the, let me, and let me explain how we got here. When Mr. Cataldo was hired, and this goes back to twenty ten, twenty ten, twenty eleven. At that time, we had an outside contractor. We had no, the town of Bethel had no. Internal IT department at all. It was operated by a part-time. Outside contractor, whereas the school district had a very well-developed network administrator and IT support staff. So. What we did back in twenty eleven was we brought on our own network administrator. That's Mr. Cataldo, and we partnered with the Board of Education. To, for IT support services, basically the supervisory services. So Nick's boss was technically had two bosses. One was the controller, which is where. IT or what we used to call data processing reports into, but also Mr. Dave Arie. Who headed up the network administration for the school district. So we've maintained a relationship since then, so for more than ten years. We've kind of had a dual relationship, and the town of Bethel has funded. Twenty-five thousand dollars of Mr. Arie's salary. Through that time for his guidance and supervisory work and and project work on our IT system. Since that time, Nick Cataldo has. Grown, has taken on all of the responsibilities of the 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 IT chief for our, for our group. It is no longer necessary to have Mr. Arie in that role. So that role will be terminated a year from this July. So July twenty twenty-three, going into the twenty twenty-four. Budget season, the town of Bethel will no longer pro-rate part of his salary and and move that over to the board of that side. Now, during this budget process, we authorized this board and the Board of Finance and the Board of Bethel. Authorized a part-time person to assist Mr. Cataldo. However, and and that person is on board, he is an excellent performer, he's doing a great job. But if you look at this list of expansion of duties. These are things that have really come on board just in, within the last six months. It is necessary that we move the part-time IT person to full-time. So the proposal we have is to use about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of ARPA funds. To move that individual to full-time in the current budget season. And then the following budget season, when when there is the switch and Mr. Aries no longer. With his portion of his salary is no longer carried by the town of Bethel, there would, that would be a wash. And and it would be about the same burden as we have currently. So then, that's the proposal, is to. Take the, take the part-time IT person and and move him to full-time. By the way, his name is Verance. He has a dual last name, and I can't think of what it is right now. My apologies, Verance, but Brad, you probably know his name. Alright, now I'm putting you on the spot.
And it's, and cast, I think.
And cast, that's right, Verance and Cast. Who is, he's been with us now for several months. He has proved to be a very, very capable employee and. Is very, very high caliber work with our IT system. So. I want to make a motion, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we permit the use of. Up to twenty-five thousand in the current year from ARPA funds. In order to move the IT position from part-time to full-time and thereby. Provide the IT services to the South Street Firehouse, to the Stony Hill Firehouse. And also the expansion of video capabilities and other IT capabilities here in the municipal center. Oh, yeah, this, by the way, this, this includes highway garage, transfer station, train station and library. Where we're putting all these IT services under one umbrella, because they've been. Pretty much fractured. Every group does its own thing. There's no communication. Today, there's been a lot of problems. There's been lack of security, especially at the train station. So this puts everything under one roof. It improves public safety. It improves efficiency. And especially for the fire folks, and also would. It would provide a lot of benefits for the library too, because they would come under the CEN system, and it would boost their speed. Internet speed and bandwidth, so they could put more, more people on the system. So that was my motion. Is there a second? Okay, so floor is open for discussion and questions.
HVAC networks, are you talking about like they have an Allerton system?
Yeah.
That controls everything.
Yeah, and energy management, right? One of the biggest things is, and I might have mentioned this before in a, in a report. The state of Connecticut is, has formalized the use of remote and hybrid meetings, and as part of that. Towns are expected to equip all of their meeting rooms for video and audio, so that we can. Do live broadcasts, whether it's through the internet or through cable TV, but it is something that. We have to move into, because that's, that's the way meetings are going to be from now on.
Is planning with some room currently have.
Yes. They have video capabilities.
Or planning has some capabilities, and we are setting meeting room the also.
Would, do we need to look at the GP room for like? Hell meetings?
Yes, yeah, definitely, that would be part of it.
Is there gonna be any cost savings? Like, will it be, like, I know the library. IT services from other places, right? Will there be a cost savings in their budget now that you're doing work over there?
You know, it's, it's hard to predict it probably. Because there was a cost savings when we, when we integrate, you know. I I will, I will spare you guys the whole story of of the IT journey when I, when, you know, Rich and I first started in oh nine, but. At that time, every department would buy its own machine. And sometimes it it was, it was really a very bizarre system. Sometimes. Say, planning, zoning, you know, the the admin office needed a computer of the town clerk. They would put it in their budget, they'd go down to Best Buy, buy something off the. Off the shelf. The IT guy, the the part-time contractor would spend hours deleting all the stuff that comes on a machine that you buy for your home, like, you know. Solitaire and, you know, video games. But in the, in the, in the changes that we made, we put everything under one roof, all the licenses were together. All the software packages were exactly the same. They were integrated, and that did cut costs tremendously. So doing that with those other centers, you know, they're, they're not big enough that we're gonna see big savings, but. We definitely won't see an increase, and we'll probably see some lot of savings. I would expect that. So.
So Vince would be our IT guy for the town side, Nick is gonna stay.
Oh, Nick stays on. No, no, Nick stays with us. Oh, yeah. Nick, Nick, now, basically Nick takes over Dave Aries' role of supervisor. He's now the the head of the IT department for for the town of Bethel. Now, there's still a lot of sharing of services back and forth and sharing of talent when needed. So let's say if we had an emergency or we were doing a retrofit for technology, say for wire, for network wiring, for cabling. They would send people over, and likewise, Nick and or Verance could help them out. Like when they, when they're programming machines for the start of school and at the end of August. And they have to get them ready. So there, we, we, both sides of the house see savings by sharing services that way.
So, and we, and we could use the ARPA funds for this legally.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we checked that out first. Any other questions? Okay, well, hearing that, I'll try your mic, so those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
That carries, thank you very much. Okay. Last item is number ten, consideration of the fund balance and tax stabilization policies. This, these two policy proposals were presented to the Board of Selectment at the last meeting. You have copies in front of you with some suggested modifications that came from the town controller, from Mr. Herring. And these, so I think these are, these are prudent restrictions that he's proposed in here to further. Put a fence around use of the funds and make sure that they're used appropriately. So un- unless there's a disagreement, I think we should make a motion to formally approve these and send them to the Board of Finance. For their comments and and review and any recommendations. They're not gonna be finally approved until the Board of Finance comes back to us and either says, yes, we like this, or we want you to put that in. Okay. Alright, any other discussion? Here we go, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And that concludes our agenda. Thank you very much. Alright, Rich seconded, those in favor. Alright, that carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan. Thanks, Marty. Thanks for being here.